Turn that on. All right, welcome everyone. We'll call the meeting to order for the Planning Commission for the City of Madeira Beach. Thank you for being here. Now that we are in order, please call the roll.
Chairman Wykoff?
Present.
Commissioner Cloud?
Here.
Commissioner Dillon?
Here.
Commissioner Noble?
Hi.
Commissioner Connolly?
Here.
Commissioner Marr?
Here.
Commissioner Leroux?
All right, looks like we're only missing Mr. Leroux. We have a quorum. We're ready to go. I don't see anybody here from the public, so I'm gonna skip that whole announcement part. The next item will be the approval of the minutes. I'm assuming everyone has taken a look at the minutes, and if we could have a motion to approve said minutes, I'd appreciate it.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as they are written.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, good enough. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Dillon?
Yes.
Commissioner Marr?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Noble?
Yes.
Commissioner Cloud?
Yes.
Chairman Wykoff?
Yes. Motion to approve the minutes is passed. Thank you, everyone. Our next item up is new business, ordinance 2024-18 Planned Development. I don't see anyone here from the public to make any comments, so I'll not invite the people that aren't here. So we'll just move right over to the cities portion.
Yes, good evening. So in front of you is ordinance 2024-18 Planned Development. This ordinance cleans up some inconsistencies with the PD section of the code with the four Pinellas Countywide rules and Madeira Beach Conference of Plan. Some of the other, most of the other changes were either clarifications or almost like housekeeping to make sure it's very clear and straightforward. Probably one of the most important things is when the planning commission, when they review a PD, this clarifies more specifically like what they have to look for. So basically, the job of you guys, if with the way that would be, so on page 13, so it talks about the review by the local planning agency, what you guys are, would be looking for when you review a PD. So you gotta make sure it's consistent with the conference of plan, and it's compatible with the adjacent land uses. And then on top of that, you have to make sure, so Section 110-388 is the, is the application for PD zoning, so you'd have to review and make sure that it meets all this in this section. And then you would need to make sure it meets the 110-393 requirements, which is what the Board of Commissioners would be looking at if you guys vote to move it forward to go to the Board of Commissioners. So you guys definitely have an important role in this process to make sure that if we ever, when we receive a PD rezoning, that it meets all this criteria, and that it's good to move to the VOC. One change we did that's important, and why I wanted to kind of point it out, is we cleaned up how the flexibility related to setbacks and height works. So we made it much more straightforward to understand what could potentially, what would we, what would you guys be looking for to find it acceptable to allow for slightly more height? The language is, we looked at other municipalities in the Tampa Bay metro area and kind of cleaned it up based on looking at that. The language is pretty standard where basically we'd be, or you'd be looking at, like, see what other civic or community enhancements, like ground floor retail, expanded setback to a lot for like more green space, enhanced landscaping, sustainable building practices like the, and other design enhancements, for example. I think that's a pretty good overview. I also included the, so four Pinellas, anything basically related to zoning that could impact the countywide rules, they have to review. So I wanted to make sure that I gave you guys a copy of the letter they sent to us, showing that they reviewed it and found it consistent with the countywide rules. We also, one of the things we had to do is we also had to correctly reference the countywide rules, including the alternative temporary lodging use standards. So if a PD rezoning and development agreement are referencing the alternative temporary lodging use standards, they would have to meet this additional criteria in the countywide rules, on top of what they have to meet in here. So it's definitely a lot stricter of a process compared to previously, because I know a lot of concerns over the years about how to handle. So we wanted to make sure to tighten it up and make sure that the planning commission and board commissioners and the residents have input and control over dealing with future PDs. So I'm happy to answer any questions, or we can go to discussion, and you guys could discuss the ordinance. This is a public hearing item, so tonight you guys would be voting to either move it forward to the VOC, move forward changes, or not vote for it. So those would be the three options.
Thank you. Anybody got any comments or questions?
I do, of course. Okay, so is this letter coming back to you that you've already submitted this to the county, and if it's done like this, they're okay with it? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I think on page three of 11, which is our, in the gray box on the bottom, it says number 11. At the top, this is where Andrew was talking about the flexibility standards that are in there. I think that's a fantastic idea. It lets us know, and lets everyone involved in the process know where flexibility can be obtained, and why, and how. I think that was really smart, a great move to do that, and I think it provides a lot of clarity, instead of guessing at what could be helpful to, you know, if they needed an extra few feet of height, how can we balance that out? I think it was a really good move. One little typo, maybe, and maybe I'm reading it wrong, on that same page, paragraph B in red, third line down, you've got that same, the paragraph reads, "The development agreement required to rezone any property," and then it goes on to say, "At the same public hearing as the rezoning, comma, before the Board of Commissioners, as a discussion item at the first public hearing at the rezoning." I think that second, that "at" should be another "as," right? I hate to be nitpicky, but I just wanted to prove that I actually read it.
For it to catch now than not when it's adopted.
Just a typo. Other than that, pretty darn good job.
Yeah.
This is a lot, so I hope you guys had a chance to, you know, really go over it and digest it. From everything that I saw, it looks like it makes good sense. It clarifies a lot of the things that people had questions about in our PD process.
Thing that I was happy that Jane, I did was we cleaned up the site data table section. That's on G for, on page 12. And this really helped, because one of the confusing things is sometimes they turn in site data tables that are even very hard for us to understand. So having it be consistent, so we know that it meets these requirements, and there's clarity is important. And it makes it easier for you guys to review it also, when you guys get it for hearing.
Anyone?
I had two things. One, in terms of on page 15, that the minimum of six-foot sidewalk, ten foot's preferred. Is that, kind of leaving that too open? I mean, you've got everything so tightly done. I mean, you know, would that be?
The only reason why we gave some flexibility, sometimes properties can vary in size, so there might be challenges with requiring the full 10-foot. From researching, the minimum of six is a reasonable standard, and better than the, current five-foot isn't really consistent with modern planning practices, so six is really the minimum you'd want. But I mean, I guess we just wanted to give the flexibility, just in case if you have like a uniquely shaped property, or that where it would be harder to get the 10-foot. But we definitely wanted the minimum of six, because five feet is just way too narrow, and you don't, and you don't really see that much anymore. Like, six is usually, like, what you see is kind of standard.
Does that sidewalk count in their impervious surface ratio?
If it's on their property, then it would.
If it's not in a right-of-way?
Correct.
Okay.
Should it say, depending on the city's determination or something, instead of just, because anybody's gonna want to put a six and go, okay, if I have the choice, I'll save the money. But if the city says, you have to put in a 10 because it'll fit, maybe some verbiage along that line?
I mean, also, I mean, it'd be up to your, like, when you're reviewing, it'd be up to your discretion, too, if you feel like the 10-foot would be required. I mean, you could include it in the motion when, at the hearing. It's just, the reason why they give a little flex, is just, every lot's different in the city, so if you have one that might be more.
I think 10-foot might be too much in some places.
Yeah. 10-foot's like a multi-use trail. That's like, almost close to the size of like, something like the Pinellas Trail.
Well, that's a lane. That's the size of a driving lane.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it gives them the ability to, if they can vary between this minimum of six, preferred 10. It also gives them the ability to have some landscaping in and along that way. So if the sidewalk does come into six, has some landscaping, then goes back to 10. So it kind of gives us some flexibility. And to Andrew's point, when it does come before you guys, you always have the option to say, can you tell us why you're not doing the 10-foot? If they, if they can't come with a good reason, then we can, we can put that in there. So we kind of want to give some flexibility for the design along there.
But it should say something that the city determines, instead of preferred. It just, that means.
Understood.
We prefer you to do it, to me, means we're kindly asking, but pay the money where you can.
Let's see. I'm wondering if we can put maybe...
Or, you know, determined by the city.
Well, or preferred if possible.
Well, that's sort of.
Might be if feasible, maybe that might.
I think if it contributes to the impervious surface ratio, too, then it could be a little onerous on the developer, too. I don't know, this might, playing devil's advocate. You know, it is, it is a pretty big expense to go from six to 10. Settle out of court for eight. I don't know, you know, what do you, where do you go with it? I mean, six is better than the five we have now, for sure. And I think in some place, a 10-foot sidewalk would look really front-heavy.
How many places have a 10-foot now, Andrew?
I'm trying to figure out where we can add something.
It would be, like, currently it'd be five, five feet on each side of the street, or what we're proposing is a minimum of six on each side. So technically, there'd be a minimum of 12 feet of sidewalk if you include both sides of the street, or 20 feet of sidewalk if you include both the streets, and that it's 10, or it's 10 feet on each side.
Are there areas now that have 10 feet, just for point of reference?
We do have some pretty good, and John's past village, did we measure some of the sidewalks there?
Yeah, and some, and some of the sidewalks for the Cambria and the condo buildings are pretty wide. I've walked them. They're, I'd have to see the exact width of them, but they're, they're built to like multi, like, almost like multi-use trail standards, because they're pretty wide, because I've walked them. But six, six feet is seen, seen as a, is a good standard to start from.
A lot of the sidewalks are being used as travel lanes by these electric bikes and electric scooters, where they're not really, I guess, supposed to be, because they're a motorized vehicle. They're not supposed to be on the sidewalks, but we all know they are. That's a separate issue, but the width would give them more room, so they're not running into the old lady walking home with her groceries, or man.
I mean, I mean, another thing that could vary, if you were doing something along Gulf Boulevard or 150th, getting the wider sidewalk, like a, like a, like a 10-foot one would make more sense than if, but if it was off of a slightly smaller street, then, then six. Because sometimes you try to do the wider, wider sidewalks along like a, like a four-lane street versus two. So that, that's what I mean, like, it's good to have some of the flexibility. But I mean, we can, I mean, we could add, what if we add the language, 10-foot preferred if feasible? Because if it's feasible, then it would be good to push for it, but I just wouldn't want to have like a scenario where like, it's not feasible there, but then we have it, like, language almost saying like it, they have to do it, even if it's not possible for, for a variety of reasons.
What if we added something that's along the lines of, "When proposed sidewalk is under 10 feet, sufficient design constraints must be shown or explained during the review process?" Something.
That's good.
We can tighten that up a little bit, but if you're okay with that general tone, I think we can work something up that, that'll work.
Okay.
Okay, cool.
I like that.
Okay.
We're doing six?
Well, six minimum, and then.
Six minimum.
And.
And if the design is under 10, if it's, you know, obviously six or more, but if it's under 10, then they need to explain why they can't meet the 10, and what design constraints they're experiencing, or why it doesn't work with the site. They have to explain that to you guys during the review process.
Yep.
Such that you get to accept it or not.
But no less than six.
Correct, never less than six.
And that would bring in your impervious.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would option, too, if they needed it for that. So that, yeah, I like that.
Okay.
I think six would be minimum.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, that is. That would be the stated minimum.
Six is minimum.
A wheelchair is 33 to 36 inches wide, so you gotta consider that.
Correct.
And then they can pass. If you break it down, and the wheelchair straddles the middle of five, you really have no way to get around, if you understand what I'm saying.
I agree completely.
So I think the six is perfect.
Yeah. And that's why, that's why it's minimum six.
Yep.
Minimum six.
And into consideration, wheelchairs.
Correct.
Yeah, that is.
So never less than six.
Okay, so there was one other item that I kind of had a thing. 17, the city manager may grant up to three one-year extensions. Can we get that where we have to grant them, rather than somebody that's, could be coming and going? You know, and I'm thinking in terms of, the city manager is not necessarily a city invol, I mean, you know, they, they run the city, but yet is it, you know, somebody that's looking out for the city like us residents and in this position. And as the example, Leva Rocks, that's been going on and on and on, and evidently it's been approved every year, but has anything been brought up again on it? You know, not, not that we are aware of it all. And that's where, you know, this kind of, okay, so maybe the city manager did that, but if it comes back to us every year to redo, or to re-up, we see it.
Would we want to do that three-year extension? City manager can do up to three years' extensions with approval by the board. That way, he's the one executing, or he or she's the one executing the contract, but it's based on you guys' approval? And I'm not sure legally if there's anything we need to.
I've never, I've never, I've seen the language you see in here, that it goes to the city manager, who has the discretion, based on like this, this ask for a good faith effort. The city manager can, can grant those extensions, and even in here, there's a limit to that, and then it goes to the Board of Commissioners if it's not still moving. I've never seen it come back to a planning board.
Yeah.
I'm not saying it can't. I've just never seen it. So that would be something we'd have to verify and make sure there's not some reason for it to come back. My guess is per Florida statute and per your code, that's not what's granted to you to do. You've already, you've already had your say on it.
Right.
And it doesn't come back for you for checkup. That's just not part of your, your duties.
It's more of administrative procedure than anything else, right?
Yeah.
I don't see.
Well, but then you also.
There's really no criteria, I'm sorry, there's really no criteria. When you guys first see these things, there's certain criteria you're looking at. This is a little bit more subjective, you know, is there a good faith effort? What does that mean? That might be something different to, you know, you versus you, and then boom, we can't get anywhere. Where the city manager, one individual, kind of knows what's going on, probably more in the day-to-day, because he's hearing from different people about what's happening, he or she's hearing from different people. So I think that's the intent behind it, that it's administrative, already kind of in the mix. But obviously, at some point, there is a, there's a stop. You're going to the commission now. You've taken, I guess this would be, you have a year, then you get three extensions, four years later. It should be going back to the commission for one more extension, and then, you know, they can address that. But there's something we can look at. I just don't, I don't think that would be proper to come back here for that.
I don't think I want that responsibility.
And there's, and there's that.
Because what if you deny it, you know, then, then you lawsuit city, because they're, they're in the process, it was already approved, and now you're pulling it out from under me?
And again, and there's no criteria.
I think there's a lot of liability.
It's very hard.
In that respect.
Last thing that you guys are supposed to do is use kind of subjective ideas.
Yeah.
So I would say probably not a really good idea.
Well, I was just thinking, because in terms of, that's what St. Pete tonight is voting on, whether they have the year-long building moratorium, that they're gonna approve no.
No St. Pete Beach.
Yeah, St. Pete Beach.
I think it's important to remember with that St. Pete Beach situation, they allow for a lot higher density height than we allow anywhere in the city, so we're a lot more restrictive already. And so I, I saw an article about it, but I, once again, like, I feel like we've done managing development and not approving things that are out of scale or too dense for our community.
Yeah, and there would be, during those three-year extent, during each of those extensions, there's no change to the plans. They, they're still adhering to that, just like with COVID and what happened there. People were allowed to continue keeping their permit application alive that was already issued, but there was no changes in anything that you've already reviewed and approved. So it's kind of legally just keeping the permit application alive. So.
I think it's in better hands with the city manager, because that person is here daily, where we're just once a month, and getting fed what we need, instead of out there proactively researching those things. It's not, it's not up to us to see if there's substantial completion, or decide what we consider substantial, you know, substantial improvements, or whatever, like the Leva Rocks thing. But that, that's still in their init, that's still in their original PD. They haven't gone beyond their deadline yet. So they haven't even had to have any extensions. I think there's another year left on that, right?
So what Mr. Trask told me about that, because I asked a couple of years ago about Leva Rock, it's a 20-year contract.
Fun.
And we have no say in it, because it's done commercially with the state. So.
All right, well.
I tried to, to get them to clean it up, because the sand was blowing across 150th, and creating problems, and it looked like a rack. And if they would just level it out and grass seed it, and why isn't that done? When you, normally when you take down a building, and you're gonna leave it as a vacant lot, we should have in our codes where the contractor seeds it, hays it, you know, and, and plants grass, rather than it blowing all over, and then at the same time, somebody used it while they were, that lot using it as a staging area to dump their soil.
That's probably for another day.
Yeah.
That's a whole different.
Sorry, I got off on.
No, you're all right. You're all right. Appreciate it. Food for thought, or dirt for thought. Anyway, on this topic, I get, you know, if you feel the need, we can try and amend it, but, you know, I don't know, we need to, whatever, like, is that a hill you want to die on, so to think, so to speak, you know? Okay. So we have one proposed change, which would be the language to the sidewalks, right? Okay. Anything else? Any other questions? Good? Well, then you know what time it is. If someone were to make a motion, that motion would need, would need to include the amendment as proposed to the sidewalk language.
Yes. I approve. I, I make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-18 Planned Development with the addendum noted in section.
It's gonna be 110-393?
Yes, section 110-393.
Number four.
Number four.
Yep.
Thank you all.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 2024-18 Planned Development with the amendment to section 110-393 subset four, related to sidewalk widths. Any discussion on the motion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Dillon?
Yes.
Commissioner Noble?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Marr?
Yes.
Commissioner Cloud?
Yes.
Chairman Wykoff?
Yes. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your lively discussion, everyone. We have no old business on the agenda. Do we have any administrative or staff presentations? I don't see any on my agenda. Any surprises?
We have the next.
Then the next thing is our planning commission discussion, which is the MAD Beach Master Plan Update.
So last, last month, we met with, we've been meeting with Kim Lee Horn, either virtually or in last month in person. We went to their offices in St. Petersburg, off of Central Ave. And they presented what they've been working on related to the master plan. In the last couple of months, we did, we did a public workshop, we did a survey and interactive map. They also assisted with doing pop-up events, like at Final Fridays and a couple other events. And we're excited to see how much feedback we received. A lot of people are excited about the master plan and decided to give input. So I included the summary document they drafted up from the feedback they received. So I don't know if you guys have read it yet, but it's a very interesting document, and it really shows how Kim Lee Horn's and NCA's staff working together have really reached out and tried to get a lot of input from the community to make sure we touch on all the things they wanted us to look at. So, and you guys can discuss it, but I wanted to make sure that they keep you guys up to date at each planning commission meeting on what's going on in the master plan, because it's important, if you have any thoughts, concerns, that we can bring back to Kim Lee Horn, and ask them if they need to change something or look at something. We're happy to do that.
And they've been very, very impressed with the activity we've had from the residents. So that's been really nice to see, and to know that they're finding it, the residents are finding it easy to get to, easy to make comments. We haven't got really any negative feedback about the usability of it, and so the comments have been, been really nice. So I have to applaud the residents for taking advantage of having their voice heard during this time. So it's been really good.
Yeah, I think that's key to the whole thing, is having the accessibility, so that the people can be heard, and they feel heard, and they realize they're being heard. I think that's super important. And then the reactions to those sentiments should be reflected in what we do as we move forward, for sure. I think you guys are doing a great job, so thank you for all that you're doing. And it looks like we got a good team working on, you know, working on this draft and moving things forward. So as we get to modify that master plan, we should be meeting everybody's expectations, or at least most of it, most of the people's expectations. I think one of the cool things is some of the recommendations that people brought up. I think one of the cool things is some of the recommendations that people brought up about, you know, the focus on residents as well as catering to tourists. I mean, so many times we hear people, I'm sick of the tourists, I'm sick of it, you know? And it was really neat to read some of the comments about, you know, we should, we're a tourism area, we should understand that and be okay with it. And as long as we, if we plan for it, things will go a lot more smoothly. I think it's really great. Anybody got any comments for city, anything you want to add to that? Mr. Cloud, you've been really quiet, you new guy.
I did have a thought, I haven't digested it yet. In fact, I haven't looked at this yet. But does it have a section in there for flood mitigation? Which we seem to be a little behind the curve based on my two-and-a-half-year observation of being in Madeira, which is less fun than tourism and amenities and stuff like that.
So there is, there is a section on here, on this draft, under sustainability and resiliency that people brought up and said flood mitigation measures should be looked at such as improved drainage, bio-sails, seawalls, raised streets due to the significant flooding issues noted, especially from 140th Avenue to 142nd Avenue between Bay Shore and Gulf Boulevard. So yeah, it is definitely on people's radar, it's coming up. And we know that's something, that 140th corridor is really, 240th and like 144th even is really an interesting little lagoon at times. Yeah.
And we do have the watershed management plan. We've actually met with the team a few, two or three weeks ago. So they're kind of nearing some points where they're going to be able to start presenting some information to the city. So that'll help kind of interweave with the master plan. And then we'll have some real data and we'll be able to look at some probably pretty interesting maps and things like that, that'll be pretty impressive. So that will be coming up as well. I can help with that.
Thanks.
Well, you guys are doing a great job. And I know it's a lot of work. We've been working on all these things for several years. And you guys, Andrew and your team and Marcy and your team, you guys should be commended for all the great work that you're doing. So I know it's a lot, trying to get it tied in and match up with Forward Pinellas and everything. There's a lot of, I picture you guys having like a nerve center with all this stuff and strings stretched out between, you know, like a crime scene thing. So you're doing a great job. And you're making it easy for us to grasp too, so I really appreciate that. So you guys are doing awesome. And we're thankful that we're not in the same position as St. Pete Beach where everybody quit on the commission except for the mayor. And that's why they're doing what they're doing. Part of the reason there's that fight about, they don't, they want to stop, they like want to hit a hard reset. And they had a paradigm shift in the way things were going there. So now the power has shifted three to two in one direction versus the way it was before. So they're trying to halt everything and like, take a deep breath and figure it out from there. So hopefully we don't come to that point. For once, Madeira Beach is not the one in the news, right? So yay for us. So anyway, that's all we've got on our agenda, other than planning for the next meeting, which will be October 7 at 6:00 PM here in this location. Any other information materials? I don't see anything, so that will be the end of this meeting. I appreciate it, this meeting's adjourned.